Amen everybody, Zach Humphrey with Public Proclaimer Ministries again. And we're on our way to St. Louis, Missouri to rebuke the homo conference of the United Methodist Church. And for those of you that didn't know or don't know, the United Methodist Church this weekend are voting on whether or not they're gonna go full homo and accept it as a denomination. Because technically, in their book of discipline, it's still considered sinful. So, they're trying to change that, the homosexuals are, the sodomites in the church. So, we're traveling up there to preach this weekend. We're also gonna be preaching at University of Missouri and another campus hopefully. So, here in the car with Brother Joe, amen, praise God. So, we're on our way to St. Louis to meet Jeff Mullen, Aaron Brummett, and other preachers that are living in the local area of St. Louis. Hopefully, we'll have a team of about six to eight-ish preachers today and a good preach. So pray for the weather and we're looking forward to seeing what God can do in the midst of this trip to St. Louis, Missouri. One good thing just to note, this is a new state for me to be preaching in. So this year, the new year of 2019 has been a big year for Public Proclaimer Ministries. Been to California, Missouri, I'll get that, you go ahead and answer if you want. St. Louis, Missouri, California, and we'll be going to Texas as well for the street preaching conference. So, praise God for what the Lord's doing, opening new doors. And just continue to keep Public Proclaimer Ministries in your prayers, in Jesus' name. Amen, God bless you and enjoy the video. Amen, so we've made it. We've made it to St. Louis, meeting some new brothers, amen. Brother Jim Butler, Jeff Mullen, praise God.
Praise God.
What's his name again?
Bob.
Brother Bob. There you go, you're gonna make it in the video, Brother Bob. Are you a local?
I am.
Amen, from Missouri, St. Louis?
Greater St. Louis area, Missouri.
Yeah, praise God, so we're here. Now where do we stand here? So John Wesley taught holiness in the inward parts. John Wesley did not teach homosexuality. John Wesley actually preached against homosexuality when he preached a sermon on vile affections. How many of you have read that sermon by Wesley? I highly doubt many of you have read Wesley's sermon on vile affections and that holiness produces a perfect love towards God and man, which does include how you have sex with someone or the lack thereof. You see, you people abuse each other's bodies with your passions and desires. Do you realize that in Paul said in 1 Corinthians, chapter 6, verse 11, that such were some of you? And in 1 Corinthians 6:9, for you perverts, you'll remember that verse, he talks about homosexuals and he says in verse 11, "Such were some of you." But you people don't teach a love and a holiness that was once homo, you teach you can be homo today.
God will forgive you.
Oh, I tell you who needs forgiven are the perverts at this wicked event. The Bible says in 1 Corinthians, chapter 6, verse 11, "Such were some of you." But you're now washed, but you're now sanctified, but you're now justified in the name of the Lord Jesus and by the Spirit of our God. You see, God's gonna require your vote when you stand before him one day, pastor, preacher, deacon, elder, youth leader, or whatever you claim to be. You know, the 4,000 people at this event that have voting privileges, every single one of you are gonna give an account to God. Yahweh, Jehovah, the King of Kings, the God, the Bible says, that is a consuming fire. The Bible, the God that says of Paul, that it's a fearful thing to fall into his hands. This is not the God of you people. You preach a God that's a soft, effeminate, wimpy, little sissy. The Bible promotes a God of great wrath. The Bible says God is so judgmental, he has a day called Judgment Day, Pastor. When's the last time you preached on that? Most of you don't even know what the Bible says. For you people, you think pizza parties and cookies is the word of God. Don't interrupt the preacher, mister, you don't interrupt your queer preachers at church. The Bible says that the wages of sin is death, but the gift of God is everlasting life. And I love and care about you people enough that I spent my day off to warn you about your sin and that you can become homo-nomo through the power of Jesus Christ. That if you have perverted desires, you can be made new and washed and made clean. You don't have to be a pervert, glory to God. You don't have to be a masturbator or a porn watcher. You don't have to be a drug addict or an alcoholic. You don't have to be a hypocrite Christian. You don't have to be a homo professing Christian. You can actually become homo-nomo, glory to God, and by the power of his Holy Spirit. My cousin was a homosexual for eight years. She lived in homosexuality with a woman. But guess what happened when she got saved, glory to God? She became homo-nomo and now she's married to a man, praise God. She's born again. She become homo-nomo, young people, and now she's born again. Do you understand what being born again means? It means getting a new state of moral character. That your desires and as a sinner were perverted and unnatural and as Paul talked of homosexuality, a vile affection. That's what Paul characterized homosexuality is, vile, base, animal-like affection. You see, I have homosexuals say all the time, "Well, you see homosexuality in the animal kingdom." I mean, male dolphins hump each other. Well, you know what, you're not supposed to live like an animal. And by admitting that you see it in the animal kingdom, you admit that homosexual behavior is animal-like or beast-like. And you would be correct. You see, the Bible says that homosexuality is a vile and unnatural affection. The problem with the Methodist Church is you teach a love that is indiscriminate. The Bible says to test all things, prove all things. It even says examine yourself every day to see if you're even in the faith. And you want a love that doesn't judge, a love that doesn't question, a love that doesn't discern. But don't you understand a foolish person does not discern? The Bible says that a foolish man does not understand judgment. You see, by condoning homosexuality, you prove you have no discernment, no judgment, no wisdom, and no love of righteousness. God is love and in him there is no darkness at all, 1 John 4:8. And the love of God. And the love of God, the love of God. The God of love gave a law. God's law is love, the Bible says. Jesus Christ said in Matthew, chapter 22, verse 37 through 40, that this is the love of God, that you love God with all your heart, all your soul, all your mind, all your strength, and to love your neighbor as yourself. And Paul said in Romans, chapter 13, "Oh, no man, anything but to love one another, for he that loves another fulfills the law." And the law condemns homosexuality. Therefore, if you commit homosexuality and it's against God's law, which is love, you are acting contrary to the love of God, which works no ill to your neighbor. By being homosexual, ripping open another man's anus for your sexual pleasure, by destroying someone's esophagus for your sexual pleasure, you prove that you do not value another soul above your present base, vile, unnatural, and animalistic desires. Oh, thanks, brother. So you need to change and you can change today through the power of the gospel. As my cousin experienced, you can become homo-nomo, glory to God. You don't have to stay homosexual and by taking homosexuals into church membership and by taking homosexuals into the leadership of the church, you are not telling them they need to repent. The Bible says that you're to set a line between good and evil, right and wrong, pure and impure. But whenever you tell homosexuals, "It's okay to be gay," you are not helping them. That's like telling a drunkard, "It's okay to be a drunkard," or a pot smoker, "It's okay to be a drug addict." That's like telling a man who commits adultery on his spouse, "It's okay to commit adultery." Oh, how many of you would condemn your pastor if he cheated on his wife? But you have no problem with homosexuals taking church membership and being your preachers. Don't you see the confusion here, the hypocrisy here, the delusion that you, people are believing? You have lost your mind when you think and say, "It's okay to be gay." You have literally lost your mind. You don't even know what your rectum is for. You don't even know what your genitals are for. You're confusing the reproductive system with the gastrointestinal tract. You don't even know basic anatomy. The Methodist Church is stupid and you need to wake up and repent and turn back to God. You know, the Bible says in Acts, chapter 3, verse 19, that you should repent, that times of refreshing may come from the presence of the Lord, from the glory of his power. Whenever you tell homosexuals, "It's okay to be gay," you're not telling them you want them to have life, you're telling them you want them to die. When you promote sin, you promote death, you don't promote life. You know, another sin of the Methodist Church I'm well aware of is the agreeance of the denomination as to abortion. Not only do you think it's okay to be gay, but you think it's okay to destroy your babies in the womb. You people are sick and in the sight of God, you're under his wrath. The Bible says in John, chapter 3, verse 36, "He that hath the son hath life; he that hath not the son shall live; but he who has not the son shall not live, but the wrath of God abides on him still." Watch your mouth, sinner. Hey, shut your mouth, sinner, shut your mouth, sinner. The Bible says that the wages of sin is death, but the gift of God is everlasting life. All I've seen today from the Methodist Church is the approval of homosexuality, abortion, cursed words, and immodestly dressed women, and pastors that are women. Do you not know that the Bible speaks to all four of these issues? All four of them. We're not some crazy group of people, but normal Christians that read their Bible and don't twist it to justify their perversion. Whenever we read the Bible, it condemned us as well in our sin and we did not justify it, we repented of it. And that's what the Bible expects of you. The Bible says that you should repent. The Greek word for repent is metanoia, that means to change your mind. And Paul taught in Romans, chapter 7, or Romans, chapter 8, verse 7, that the carnal mind is imetia against God. It is not subject, guess what? To the law of God, neither indeed will it be. You people still have a carnal mind because you're not subject to the law of God. The Bible says in Romans, chapter 8, that when you have the Holy Spirit, you end up fulfilling the law of God by the Spirit. And the law of God is love and God's love is shed abroad in your heart when you're born again, Titus 3, 3 through 6. So you need the love of God that is from the Lord, from his Holy Spirit, that makes you opposed to all sin, for the goodness of man and for the joy and pleasure of Almighty God. Whenever you love your sin, you hurt the heart of God. You break God's heart, you break your own heart, and you break the heart of the person you sin against or with. This is not the love that God has called us to, friends, but the love of God teaches us, the Bible says, to keep his commandments. The Bible says the grace of God that brings salvation has appeared to all men, teaching us that denying and godliness and worldly lust, we should live soberly, righteously, and godly. In this prison age, you perverted Methodist people, in this prison age, live holy and above sin and live in the love of God. I can assure, a woman, I can assure you that ripping open another man's anus or two women doing things together behind closed doors is not the love of God. I think we can agree, can we agree on that? I mean, we can't even agree on that? Come on, people. I know also what you Methodist people have done. You have hidden when this vote will be on this perverted thing you're doing. You're not even releasing. What do you think?
I like that one.
You like the sign?
I like that one.
Glory to God, amen.
They're gonna save the American church.
Praise Jesus, amen.
You are gonna save the American church, Roswell.
Holiness.
Yes, praise God.
You are right.
Vote for holiness.
You are right.
Amen, amen. Amen, God bless you. Vote holiness, God bless you, amen, amen.
You will save the American church.
Yes, praise God. Yes, praise the Lord.
You can save the American church.
God bless you.
God bless you all, amen.
Amen.
Wow, what a difference in heart. That's the difference of their hearts.
Liar.
You're a liar.
You're specifically a liar.
You are a liar, you're the father, your father's a liar. You're a liar.
In many, it's not just that, but many passages in general, if you want to get into the interpretation of Scripture, from the earliest times, the early church fathers.
They understood very clearly what these passages were talking about.
No, that's right.
It is right, no. Sir, I have a degree in church history. I have studied the early church fathers. They spoke very clearly against homosexuality.
No, they were talking about, they were talking about sodomie. Sodomie has nothing to do with homosexuality. And sodomie, it is a word. Keep finding in church history.
You're a liar.
He doesn't find it in.
These are the men who have crept in unnoticed over the years and who bringing in destructive heresies.
You're gonna burn in hell.
Bringing in destructive heresies into the church. Bringing in destructive heresies, they crept in unnoticed and the ones reserved for them are the blackness of darkness forever.
You know what the definition of sodomie is?
Yes.
What is it?
It is, it is a definition taken in church history.
I mean, but the definition of sodomie in Merriam-Webster is oral and anal intercourse. So how can't that have anything to do with homosexuality?
You see, if you read the text about sodomie, then you will see that nothing happened in fact in sodomie.
I mean, sodomites have to have sex some way, don't they? Oral and anal intercourse.
Yes, but that is talking about clash between two religions. It is the Canaanite, it is the Canaanite.
But the word for sodomie is specifically sexual acts.
Yes, but you don't find the word sodomie in the Bible.
You don't, but you find Arsenochite, which is a homosexual. In Romans, chapter 1, 1 Corinthians 6:9.
That's not right. That is about the Greek praxis about abusing boys.
Well, that's why in the King James, they call it abusers of themselves with mankind.
King James, he should really try to translate the Bible.
When you're, when you're rectum ripping, you're abusing each other.
If you have somebody telling you it's okay to be gay, this is hate speech.
See, they reject the word of God, brother.
If it's okay to be gay, they are lying to you.
You reject God's word of Jesus. I wouldn't want to go to your church. Your church is wicked, wicked, wicked. Gonna burn in hell.
Receivers.
Receivers and muckers.
Break to the pit of hell.
They come at you with a smile and a tolerable color and they are spilt speaking heresy, speaking words that it believes will cause you to end up in the lake of fire. The sexual embryo, Jesus said, will be cast to the lake of fire. Women having relations with other women are called vile affections. It is unnatural for a man to lie with a man. People practicing this lifestyle should not be tolerated in the church. And if you have clergy that are telling you that it is tolerable, you need to cast them out. They need to be rebuked in front of others so that the rest will fear. Praise us for you in the name of Jesus. And there also were also sodomites in the land. And they did according to all the abominations of the nations, which the Lord cast out before the children of Israel. Sodomites do abominations in the land. Yes, is it not ironic that with gay marriage, all kinds of anarchy has fallen on this land? And indeed, friends, if you embrace sodomie and pedophilia into your denomination, also chaos will descend upon the land of your church. These are the death throes of a dead religion, of a demonic religion. The great religion of the Christian awakenings of the United States of John Whitfield and John Wesley are dying. Repent and embrace the old paths and pick up your Bible and believe it. Don't fall.
Jesus said, deny yourself, pick up your cross and follow me.
Daily.
Do you do it every day?
I'm just confused about some of these other things and.
Like what?
Like Jesus not saying anything about homosexuality, like.
He did. He did though. God 10:15, it says, for Sodom and Gomorrah had seen these things, they would have repented a long time ago. That's what Jesus said after he did many miracles in Tyre, I'm not Tyre, sorry. Did many miracles in.
These things, I'm being correct.
But listen.
Bless y'all.
Good talking, buddy. Hey, don't, hey, if a hundred people say it's right, you're the only one saying it's wrong, don't be a sinner. Be right to push on. You got God.
I'm not here to be against.
All sin leads to hell. Where are the cities he preached?
Where is he?
Amen. Men, so praise God. We're here preaching at the Methodist Church Conference. As you've seen in some of the video, it can get pretty heated. What we're doing right now is you see, down here, we have a team on this end and down there, way down the road, is where some of the video has been filmed so far. It's where I preached earlier. So there's two main entrances to the dome and so we split up into two different teams. So, that's what we're doing right now, amen. Let's see how it goes. Amen. So here we are preaching, Brother Aaron Brummett and other people have arrived, glory to God. We have sodomite preachers at this event. Example A. And so here we are, there's the group preaching right now. But, to my lack of shock, we have, we have homosexual Christians at this event. I told them this is not a gay pride, this is a church event and they don't know the difference, so. Here's our fan club, right here. I told them our signs are better than your signs. They say they're born this way, I say the Bible says be born again. John, chapter 3, verse 8. If you don't like the way you were born the first time, try being born again the second time. You can become a new person. I asked the, this group, you know, why do you do this to yourself? Born this way, called this way, born this way, called this way. You know, God calls you to be different. In fact, the Bible says, since they don't know, Romans, chapter 6, verse 1 and 2, "Should we keep on sinning that God's grace may abound? God forbid, how can we that are dead to sin live any longer therein?" Paul said in 1 Corinthians, chapter 6, verse 9, that homosexuals may not inherit the kingdom of God and that verse 11, 1 Corinthians 6:11, "Such were some of you." So homosexuality to Paul was in the past tense. For, 1 Corinthians, chapter 6, verse 9, for the perverts, they usually remember that. So, this is our fan club. Not a big response, hopefully they can mount a bigger response tomorrow and we'll see how it goes.
Yes, so judgmentalness right there.
I thought, I thought, we should be yelling, we should be yelling.
Take that judgmentalness away, because if you want to hold this fair.
So are you for John the Baptist style preaching?
I am for us to hold the biblical word.
Okay, are you for what's going on right here?
Yes, it's so obvious to you, but there's a way to do it.
So what, what is love? What is love?
I've had many conversations with others today.
Explain.
Whatever, say, you, you are one, you're in a base of judgment.
Explain Jesus kind of love.
I just want to explain.
Explain.
I will. I just want to make sure you don't consider that you just judge me.
Well, I couldn't hear over the sound of it, so I was trying to make sure I heard right.
You might be doing that other ways that the people, the Bible itself is not gonna give you.
Explain to us Jesus love, let's talk about Jesus love. Not talking, misunderstanding.
You don't have to get me here. I'm on the same page with you, while these delegates are about to walk out, okay? I want this to go the way you do too. They need to see you.
So I just want to make sure we're on the same page. So true love, Jesus said in Revelation, chapter 3, he said, "Whom I love, I rebuke and chasten these else before I repent." So true love is rebuke and saying, "God loves you so much, he wants you to repent and come out of that lifestyle and become truthful."
The very word that guarantees your hell, if you deny Jesus, if you deny me the one that I will deny you.
Oh, no. The Bible says, it says rebuke, so that's true love. Now, the issue here is, do you agree with Revelation 3?
Yes, I do.
Then don't be attacking, misunderstanding is not the issue. So, are we, are we?
Put him in the corner.
Are we commanded?
Yes, I see what she's saying. She's saying that we're, we're turning people off, we're making people hate the Lord. Right, right. I see her.
We already took, we already took this ground.
She's saying that we're gonna make people hate the Lord.
That's all, so pray, pray.
Don't tell them they're wrong.
Pray, pray that the rebuke. They may not be wrong. And repent, in Jesus' name. People repent in Jesus' name.
No, she's, she's right.
The United Methodist Church. The end of the United Methodist Church, these young queers. The end of the United Methodist Church. Hello, how are you? Good. So have you always been a homo or just?
I never have been. I'm an ally.
Yeah. Why do you do that?
Well, my brother-in-law died of AIDS.
Yeah.
I have many friends that their children are homosexual.
Okay.
And I do that because I don't want my church to say bad, mean things.
Yeah. What do you think the Bible's mean when it talks bad about homosexuality?
I think that the Bible has, you know, there's two or three things that might say that, but there's also that people that are divorced.
Yeah.
That do other mean things. They beat their wives.
That's not good. It's not right.
No, no. I don't think of it as a sin.
Yeah.
But I have friends that are ninety and ninety-eight and they've been together for fifty years.
Does that make it right in the sight of God?
Because they love a person and someone loves them.
Yeah.
I don't think a person should go through life and not be loved.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But they're loved by God. That's why he calls them to change.
Yeah, that's right. But they're also lonely if they don't have someone to be a friend with.
Right. Oh, I got some too.
So that's my reason. And everybody has their own.
But the problem is the Bible expressly condemns homosexuality.
But they also said slavery was also right at one time.
Well, they never did justify it, but that's, I mean slavery, slavery exists to this day.
Times change and.
But God's word doesn't change.
And reason and experience. Our church is based on four tenets. Reason, experience, tradition, and truth.
Yeah, the tradition in scripture says homosexuality is a base in vile affection.
But it's a, it's a whole, whole wax.
Right, 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 right.
So that's why I believe I do.
Right, right. Sure. Uh, okay, yeah.
But you ask me and I have a reason.
Right. You didn't give any Bible, so that's pretty sad. So thank you. Hello? Have you always wanted the Methodist Church to end?
Are you at the convention?
No, he's not. No, but I'm just a normal citizen.
No, go across the street or I will take you to jail. You have one option, not two. Go across the street.
He's filming too.
Yeah, well, it's a public, I can film if I want.
You can film all day. I didn't say that. Go across the street.
Are you a homo too?
Hey, I'm whatever you want me to be. I know I'm a policeman. I can book you. How about that?
Well, if you get the sidewalk wrong, then we may all have a problem, won't we? You get the sidewalk rule wrong, we might all have a problem.
Take the car.
And for you to allow these sodomites, uh, guys around here like this, these pathetic perverts who pervert the rainbow flag, I want the rainbow flag back. I remember when I was a kid, the rainbow was normal until you perverts, you pedophiles, you got your pedophiles and filed it. Shame on you, shitty jean wearing, porn addicted, long hair having perverts. Shame on you, rainbow flag pervert, sinner.
So here we are at the United Methodist Church Conference. Behind me, you can see that they've mounted a resistance. As I told them earlier, their resistance of two or three people were kind of upsetting and disheartening. But we see, we see this response that they've mounted. Uh, they're over there singing hymns as they hold their gay flags and, and promote their homosexuality. An officer a minute ago, as you've seen, threatened to arrest me for standing on their side of the sidewalk. Uh, in case you can't tell, when you look at the sidewalk, when you look at the sidewalk, the volleyball, there's a volleyball convention going on today too. And there's volleyball people walking on that side of the sidewalk. Uh, the officer that threatened to arrest me appeared to be a homosexual woman. And when I asked her that, she denied it or didn't deny it and threatened to arrest me. And so apparently that's their side of the, homosexuals get their own sidewalk even today. So you see how they really cater to these things. So it's very upsetting and sad. So pray for the Methodist Church. It's terrible. Terrible. Brother Aaron's getting ready to start preaching now.
God's speaking to you and he says, who changed the truth of God into a lie? And worship and serve the creature more than the creator, who is blessed forever. Amen. For this cause God gave you, abundant vile affections. For even you, your women did change the natural use into that which is against nature. And likewise also the men leaving the natural use of the woman burned in their lust, one toward another. Men with men, homosexual sodomite man with homosexual sodomite man. God said that in his word. And likewise also the men leaving the natural use of the woman burned in their lust, one toward another. Men with men walking that which is unseemly, walking that which is sin before holy God. And receiving in themselves that recompense, that payment of their error which was meat. And even as they did not like to retain God in their knowledge, God gave them over to a replicate mind. You know what your problem is here today? You've got a polluted mind. You've got a replicate mind. You've got a mind that can't even work right. God made a man to desire a woman and God made a woman to desire a man. And when you pollute the holy ordinances of God, you pollute the holy scripture. And God says, be sure your sin will find you out. You're not gonna get away with your sin on judgment day. The Bible says in Revelation, chapter number twenty and verse number seven. The Bible says, and I saw a great white town, and him that sat on it, heaven is faced the earth and the heaven fell away, but there was found no place for them. You're gonna hide in judgment, pardon God. You're gonna hide from Jesus Christ. But the Bible says there is no hole you can hide in, there is no cave you can hide in, there is no place to hide from the wrath of Almighty God. The Bible says the only way of escape is found through the cross of Calvary. The Bible says in John, chapter three, starting in verse fifteen, it says, and as Moses lifted up the serpent in the wilderness, even so must the son of man be lifted up. That whosoever blew it in him should not perish, but have eternal life. For God so loved the world that he gave us only because of sin.
See you guys. The end of the United Methodist Church. How long have you guys been together?
I've been her pastor for almost thirty years.
Yeah?
And they're both heterosexual.
Wow, that's good. You can still be a heterosexual sodomite though. Yeah.
She's like a grandma too.
Yeah, yeah. There's something about the rainbow things around the neck though that makes me pretty scared, you know?
Scared how?
You know, I mean the rectum's not safe at this conference.
I don't know anything about that.
You know what I mean?
No, I don't.
This guy's dangerous. HIV and AIDS and hepatitis.
Oh, don't worry. I can't give you.
Oh, no, don't touch me.
We're here to share the love of Jesus.
Right. But Revelations three nineteen says, as many as Jesus loved, he rebukes and chases. Be zealous therefore serious and repent.
You know, I stand at the door and knock.
Right. So his love calls out of darkness.
He has come in and joined us.
If you've opened truly into him. Some people open to their emotions. You've never seen anyone open up to God out of emotions?
Sixty-five years.
Do you approve homosexuality? You're an embarrassment to God. Such an embarrassment. You're old enough to know better. You don't even know homosexuality is sin.
This woman is a saint on earth.
First Corinthians six nine, for you pervert, you'll remember that. First Corinthians six nine condemns homosexuality. Are you too old to read your Bible or what? What, can you not read it? Keep your blessing to yourself, sinner. You're an embarrassment to God. Shame on you.
The date of when this vote is till today. You didn't want the foreign people to know when this vote would be because you know the foreign Methodists don't agree with these perverted and vile homosexuals. But this American Methodist Church is perverted, sick and wicked, and God knows it. I just want to remind you people, today is prayer day for the Methodist Conference and God hasn't heard a single prayer in this perverted building since you showed up. God just wants to, ah, vomit you out. The Bible says in Revelations, chapter three, that when you're lukewarm, Jesus Christ will literally spit you out of his mouth, vomit you out. You perverts are gonna be vomited out of the mouth of God. You're disgusting in the sight of God. You know that's the symbol for Satanism? I figured I'd find a Satanist at the Methodist Church Conference. You people are sick. You're an embarrassment to God. An embarrassment to God. God doesn't listen to you effeminate, gay acting men at this Methodist Church meeting. God's not listening to you perverts. God's not hearing your prayers because you're not willing to repent. And the Bible says God's eyes are over the righteous, his ears are open unto their prayers. But the face of the Lord is against them that do evil in the book of Peter. Do you realize that God will not even listen to your prayers if you don't stop being a sinner? You don't even have a right to pray, you bunch of homos, unless you get right with God. You should be ashamed of yourself. A man's preaching right now, woman, take your time. The Bible says that the wages of God, the wages of sin is death, but the gift of God, the gift of God is everlasting life. Do you realize the love of God teaches you to keep his commandments? You see, Jesus said in Matthew, chapter twenty-two, that we're to love God with all our heart, all our soul, all our mind, all our strength, and love our neighbors ourself. And I know what you people are doing here this weekend. You've come here to vote on queers and homos being your pastors, your deacons. How many of you want a homo leading your youth group? You men, you want your boys being taught by homos? Your, your boys are gonna be raped by homos in your youth group. You guys need to be careful.
Why are you so riled up, Aaron?
See, I'm angry because John Wesley would be just sick of you people. He would roll over in his grave. Worse than John Wesley, Jesus Christ would vomit you out of his mouth in judgment.
What people are you talking about?
You people are an embarrassment to God. This entire denomination is an embarrassment to God. You have women pastors, queer acting men as your pastors, you're making homos leaders in your churches. Where's the manhood? You realize in the Bible, Peter said, be men? Be men? Peter said, be men?
Do you realize that the United Methodist Church is a conservative denomination?
The United Methodist Church is conservative no longer because I know why you're here. You're voting on the progressive plan, the traditional plan, and the intermediary plan. And in the progressive plan, you have homos leading the churches. In the intermediary plan, you've got three different districts and you're still gonna try and stay the Methodist Church. And then in the traditional plan, the book of disciplines language stays the same.
If you believe you speak for God, why is there so much anger and hatred?
I'm angry at the Methodist Church. I'm angry because Christ is angry. The Bible says in Hebrews, chapter one, verse nine, that Jesus Christ loved righteousness and he hated iniquity.
That's right. And that's, and that's why we're, this church is to be reformed.
Yes.
That's, that's, that's why.
I hope the Methodist churches are formed. But you have homos walking around in this meeting who claim to be Methodist. So you need to rebuke them. In the city, I, I am from eastern Kentucky. And in my little town, there's a homosexual Methodist church in eastern Kentucky. I know what you people do in the closet. Most of you've watched too much porno and now you're homosexual. God knows your heart. You people don't even know what the rectum is for. You don't even know what your genitals are for. You don't even know what the reproductive system is and the gastrointestinal tract is for. You are so confused, you don't even know basic anatomy. Don't even know basic anatomy. How many of you in anatomy class in high school were taught that the anus was a sexual reproductive organ? Not one of you. How many of you were taught that the mouth was a sexual reproductive organ? Those are the only two options for a homo, the mouth or the rectum. And many of you people have absolutely no idea what those body parts are for. Do you know what the definition of sodomy is? Sodomy is oral and anal intercourse. And you people are voting on oral and anal intercourse. You should be ashamed of yourself that you're taking time out of God's day. Don't touch me, woman. That's assault. Don't touch me. Get off of me. The Bible says that the wages of sin is death, but the gift of God is everlasting life. And I can assure you people that the Holy Ghost would not tell you it's okay to be a homo. The Holy Spirit would not condone gay acting behavior. You know what's gay? Gay used to mean happy, you know, but now it's a rainbow flag that means sodomy, oral and anal intercourse. You should be ashamed of yourself that you have to have preachers come and tell people who profess Christ that sins in the Bible are sin. In first Corinthians, chapter six, verse nine, Romans, chapter one, twenty-six to twenty-eight, first Timothy, chapter one, verse eight through eleven, and Galatians, chapter five, verse nineteen to twenty, all condemn homosexual acts and homosexuality. You know the Bible even condemns homosexuality as a desire? It calls it a vile desire. You shouldn't even have the desires. You should repent of the desires, much less the actions. Can I talk to the men for a second? Women are too emotional. How many of you men want your young youth group to be raised up by a queer? How many of you want homosexuals running your youth group? How many of you want transgenders running your youth group? Don't you see the danger here, men, for your children that you're bearing? Women, don't you see the danger of raising up your children under people who don't even know what the anus is for? Don't even know what your genitals are for? That you would think it's okay to be gay? A lot of you old men out here that profess to be preachers are disgrace in the sight of God, like this old hag right here. A disgrace in the sight of God. Doesn't even know what the anus is for. Don't even know what the rectum is for. You see, the Bible condemns homosexuality as a base desire. Sir, you can be saved. You can be saved.
Doing the wrong thing.
You can be saved.
I have been saved.
You can become homo no mo, glory to God.
I have been saved. You guys.
You need to become a new person. You see, you wicked perverts that are sexually promiscuous, God knows your heart. God knows your life. And many of you need to grow up and man up a little bit. You people don't even know what your rectum is for. You think, oh, I'm doctor so-and-so. Oh, I'm doctor so-and-so. You think because you're doctor so-and-so that God gives two rips about your degree you've got at Asbury or any other crappy Methodist college? You think, oh, I've got my jacket on, I'm doctor so-and-so. God knows your heart. You ain't nothing in the sight of God. Oh, I'm pastor so-and-so. I'm Miss so-and-so. Take off that filthy rag, woman, and get right with God. The Bible condemns your sin in his sight. Do you realize that God doesn't give two rips about your doctorate degree, your bachelor's degree, your associate degree? But God does care about what you do with your penis in the bedroom. God does care about what you do with your rectum, old timer. And God's gonna get, you're gonna give an account to God for every moral choice you make. Do you realize that the Bible says it's appointed unto man once to die? And after this comes the judgment. And it's appointed unto man to give an account of himself to God. Do you realize the Bible says YOLO? You only live once and then after this comes the judgment. Hebrews nine twenty-seven. I would venture to guarantee your youth group comprises pizza, cookies, and watching television and playing video games. That's the reason you're raising up all these effeminate homo young men that are becoming the pastors of your queer churches. The Bible's calling you out of darkness and into his marvelous light. You have no light in darkness. The Bible says you need to discern between light and darkness, good and evil, heaven and hell, and make the choice to change your mind. You people are sick, 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 like that woman with the gay umbrella over there. Sick. The Bible's calling you out of darkness and into his marvelous light. When you have women like that running the church, how hardly can you expect holiness in the inward parts? Keep your mouth shut, woman. Women are not permitted to speak. Not permitted to speak. The Bible says that the wages of sin is death, but the gift of God is everlasting life. And you have no life when you've no change of moral character. And you have no life when you've no change of moral character. What does it mean to be born again? Get baptized? No. What does it mean to be born again? Start going to church? Wrong. What it means to be born again is to be filled with the Holy Ghost, whereby you turn from darkness to light, from evil to goodness, from hell to heaven, that you once were blind, but now you see. But you people think seeing is rectum ripping and women doing sexual acts with women. Public service announcement, homos. God does not hear your prayers as sinners. The Bible says that Jesus Christ, "Jesus' eyes are over the righteous; God's eyes are over the righteous; His ears are open unto their prayers. But the face of the Lord is against them that do evil." And you see, whenever you're here to vote for homosexuality as a denomination, I can assure you, you're not here for good reason.
You want to use... I've got a bunch of scripture and quotations from early church fathers on here on this subject. If you want to use it, you're welcome to.
Thank you. Just tell me when you want to preach. I'll just pass it along to you.
Whenever you're ready. As long as somebody is keeping the word going forward.
Sure.
That's what we need.
You people embarrass me. You're an embarrassment to God, just remember that. All you people that are voting for this, if you vote for anything other than the traditional plan, you're in a shame in the sight of God. If you vote for anything else other than the traditional plan and keep the language in the book of discipline and punish these homosexuals and kick them out of your churches, then you are an embarrassment in the sight of God. You see, holiness is what God requires. You see, these foreign countries, they know that. But in American churches, you've lost your mind. You've backslid from God. And God knows your heart. God knows your life. God knows what you do in the private closets of your houses, and He's going to hold you accountable. The Bible says that God's eyes are in every place. Holding the evil and the good. The Methodist Church doesn't even teach there anything is evil. The only thing you people think is evil is judging someone or not loving. You see, you don't even know what love is. You realize God's law is love, and in God's law, He says thieves go to hell? That homos go to hell, old timer? That porn watchers go to hell? Do you realize God's love is the discerning love? You realize God keeps sinners out of heaven for the sake of love? Why, if homosexuals were allowed to go to heaven as they are, then heaven would become just as perverted as it is here. And I can assure you, there'll be no gay pride parade down the gold streets of heaven. He has a strong bedding around there, high walls, and 12 gates, glory to God. And you're not going to get in there by the skin of your teeth, homo-ing your way to heaven so you can have a gay pride down Main Street of Heaven. I can assure you that heaven is a holy place, separate from sin and sinners, that hell is full of homosexuals that refuse to change. And by the judging of it, hell's going to be full of Methodist people. Hell's going to be full of Baptist people, Pentecostal people, charismatic people. Hell's especially going to be full of perverted Methodists. You've forgotten the method of holiness. Now your new method is becoming one with the culture. You put up women pastors because it's hip. You have your skinny jeans. Your preacher's got tighter jeans on than a grip on theology. And you need to get right with God. Just remember, the Bible says that homosexuality is sin. How many of you think it's okay to be gay? Public service announcement, if you think it's okay to be gay, that's hate speech. If you think it's okay to be gay, that's hate speech. You're promoting the death of your neighbor by their sexual immorality. If you love your neighbor, the Bible says you will rebuke your neighbor. Do you not know that? Have you no knowledge? Have you people not read the Bible? The only verse most of you know is John 3:16, forgetting that in the same chapter, John 3:36, the Bible warns that sinners and unrepentant men are under the wrath of God as they stand. Right now, there's people in this conference under the wrath of God. And the only reason you won't split hell wide open tonight is because the grace of God is long-suffering, not willing that any should perish, but that all men should come to the knowledge of the truth and be saved. God's will is your salvation, not your damnation. But as long as you persist in your homo-ish and homo-ing desires and behaviors, you're procuring for yourself wrath against the day of wrath and revelation of the righteous judgment of God. So you need to fear God, the Bible says, and keep His commandments. This is the whole duty of man. In Revelations, the Bible says, "The eternal gospel is to fear God and do His will." You people have forgotten the fear of God. Jesus said in Matthew, Chapter 10, Verse 27, "Do not fear the one which can destroy your body, but afterwards can do no more; but yea rather fear him which hath power to destroy both soul and body in hell." Yes, I tell you, fear him. Do you not know who this is talking about? It's talking about God. God kills people. God killed Andonius and Sephira in Acts for lying to the Holy Ghost. That's after the cross. Jesus Christ has killed people. God has killed people. Look at all the people God smote with judgment in the Old Testament. If you want to learn gay history, read Genesis, Chapter 19, "When God rained fire and brimstone from heaven on those homosexuals." If you want LGBTQ history in your youth group, I suggest start with Genesis, Chapter 19. You people are disgrace in the sight of God. You don't even know what your rectum is for. You don't even know what your genitals are for. But God knows your heart. God knows your life. God knows what you're doing in the closet. And you're going to think you're going to come out of the closet and tell God how His church is going to be. You're an embarrassment to God. Shame on you. There's not going to be no gay pride down Main Street in Heaven. There's not going to be no homos marching down those gold streets, parading your pride. Do you not know the homosexual movement? Their banner is pride. Can any of you old preachers out here, you idiots, tell me what the Word says about pride? That pride goes before a fall and a haughty spirit before destruction? You think because you're Doctor so-and-so that God respects what you've got to say about His Word? Homosexuality? Oh, that's not a sin anymore. You know, Paul was just a bigot. Paul was just a misogynistic jerk, you see? That was for that time, but we're living in a new age, and God's love has changed, you God's love has not changed, and thank God it hasn't, because His love preserves us, His love sustains us, and His love upholds the law for the good of the public, for the good of the kingdom, as a reflection of His character. What if God said it was okay to murder? What would you think about God then? You see, God's law reflects His love. And God's law is love, and anything it condemns is hate. Anything it promotes is love. You people are sick, and you need to repent and get right with God while you have time and space. Hey, brother, you want to preach? Or anyone? Keep your mouth shut. Watch your mouth, center. Women are not permitted to speak, woman. Amen. So here we are. This is day one, St. Louis, the Methodist Church Conference Preach. And in my summary for day number one, this conference has been just like preaching at a gay pride parade. They've had their festivals, their rebuttals, some of them have become physically violent with us. A homosexual police officer, as you seen, I told you earlier, threatened to arrest us for being on the sidewalk. And they're claiming that they own that private property, that entire sidewalk over there. Irregardless, we've had a good day. The preach of this conference for day one Saturday is about to wrap up here. We're going to go try and get some lunch and then maybe do some bar preaching tonight. Brother Aaron knows, the policeman said to Brother Aaron a little bit ago, that they know that tomorrow, Sunday, that the Westboro Baptist Church is coming to preach outside this conference. And I just want to say a side note, the Westboro Baptist Church is entirely un-Christian. They hate people, we love people. They believe people are already condemned to hell by the pre-choice of God. They are hardcore Calvinists. And we are by far not Calvinists. We believe Christ died for all men as a propitiary offering, that all men might be able to be saved through it. And that's totally contrary to Calvinism. And so we're planning on getting here early tomorrow because we know that the Westboro Baptists are going to try and get here to get a good spot. And this corner is a really good spot. So we'll see what happens tomorrow. I guess I'll be checking back in with you in a few seconds with video from tonight's preaching at the bars. So have a good day. God bless you guys.
Hey, I'm Johnny Burkine from Mississippi. I'm just here to lift up the mighty name of Jesus, and hopefully these people will vote against out of my marriage, which is against God's law. We know God mentioned several times in the Bible that marriage is between one man and one woman. And He also says it's an abomination for a man to lie with a man as he would with a woman. So we're just here in the love of Jesus, and hopefully, we know that God will prevail, but you know, these people here, they just want to get their ears tickled and listen to lies and create a God in their own image. And a lot of them are deceived by Satan that comes disguised as the angel of light.
Right.
But anyway, we're just here because Jesus sent us here.
Amen.
To love our neighbor as ourself.
Right. Look at this van, Brother Johnny's van. Check that out. What's the story on that van?
Well, when I finally surrendered fully to Christ in 2005, well, actually in 2010, I got this van, and I wanted to show my authority in Christ. So you know, just like the sheriff has sheriff written real big on his van, on his car, and the police have police real big, you know, fire department, amen and so forth. And I like the way it flashes at night when they drive by in front of your headlights.
Yeah.
So I put my authority is Jesus. So I had him written real big on my van and reflective lettering. So at night, you know, we go, and I could pull into a gas station where they're selling drugs and just hop out with any fear of getting shot. You know, maybe I will get shot one day, but then I'll be in heaven.
Amen.
I could go up to them and just tell them about Jesus, and they respect that, you know?
Right.
They see this van. So it just gives me... It's my authority.
Yeah. Praise God.
I go into unwanted places.
Amen. Pleasure to meet you, Brother Johnny. These guys are from where?
I'm from Mississippi, and my friends are from Pennsylvania.
Yeah. Pennsylvania, Mississippi, Kentucky. We're from everywhere at this event, so praise God.
All right, Zach.
Amen. God bless you all, and you have a good day.
Thanks, you too.
We'll see you tonight.
How did you get the message on the back of my jacket?
Let's check it out. "God loves you and has a wonderful plan for your life in hell if you do not repent." I like that. Amen. That's the full gospel.
Yeah.
Amen.
Hey, don't forget your bag.
I'm just checking it out. Look at this van. Isn't this awesome? John 3:18. "As many as I love, I view and chase in." Revelation 3:19. "As wax melts before the fire, so the wicked perish at the persistent presence of God." Psalm 68:2. And then Jesus is God. Praise the Lord. You need Jesus down that side. So these guys, these guys are from Mississippi. Glory to God. And so thank God for what the Lord is doing. We have brethren from Kentucky. We have brethren from Mississippi. We have brethren from Pennsylvania. We have brethren from Virginia. We have people from all over the country here to declare that Jesus Christ is Lord to the Methodist Church. A lot of times, people's perception of street preachers is that they're a small group of people, like a little cult or a sect. But I've come to find in many denominations all across the country are men who are rising up, unashamed and unapologetic in their declaration of the gospel in the open air. And so I'm thankful to God that we have both young and older brethren standing for the Lord. And look at this. Right across the street is a local brother holding a sign. And he stood with us yesterday. So if you think that street preaching is abnormal, then you're wrong. The Bible even commands you to go out into the public and declare Christ. When the Bible says the word preach, that word in Greek literally means to go and cry aloud publicly. That's the reason I named my ministry Public Proclaimer Ministries, having a heart to declare in the open air that Jesus Christ is King of Kings. See, here we are. This is day two, day number two, at the Methodist Church Conference. We're just getting started. If you look across the street, Brother Joe and another brother are standing with him, Brother Jeff Mullen. So just pray for us. Enjoy the video, and let's see what Christ has in store for us today. Amen. Amen. Praise God. The Bible says in Luke, Chapter 19, Verse 27. Hopefully you brought your Bibles to the gay Methodist church vote or your volleyball tournament. The Bible says in Luke, Chapter 19, Verse 27, Jesus speaking, "And He said that at the judgment seat, bring those enemies of mine, which would not that I should reign over them; bring them hither and slay them before me." And Luke, Chapter 19, Verse 27, "Bring those enemies of mine, which would not have me to reign over them; bring them hither and slay them before me." This is obviously not the Jesus of the Methodist Church. The problem with many of you today, you have the appearance or the thought that Jesus was a pot-smoking, beer-guzzling homo. And obviously, when we read in the Bible, the Bible says Jesus Christ was separate from sin and was also separate from sinners. Jesus did not go to the bar and hang out with the boys. You guys have perverted Christ to suit your own means. The Bible says in the Old Testament, cursed is the man that gets his neighbor drunk. But you sinners today say, "Oh, Jesus turned water into alcoholic wine, so whenever I'm doing my beer shots, my vodka, my beer guzzling, oh, I'm just like Jesus. Jesus turned water into wine, so I'm getting drunk just like Jesus." And so you've painted a Jesus for your own sinful desires. But whenever you look in Luke, Chapter 19, Verse 27, and He says, "Bring those enemies of mine, that would not have me to reign over them; bring them hither and slay them before me," I don't see the image of the Jesus you promote or the church promotes today. I don't see the image of Christ in the church world today, and I'm a preacher in church. In fact, I preach in the Methodist Church, and I'm well aware of their perverted nature and the things they're doing in this building today, Monday and Tuesday. And so we've come to beg you to surrender to the God of the Scriptures, to the actual Jesus Christ, which is not of any private interpretation, but is clearly evident. The one who died on a cross, shed His blood, rose again the third day, was holy and righteous. You see, the Bible says of Jesus in Hebrews, Chapter 1, Verse 9, that Jesus loved righteousness, and He hated sin. This is not the Jesus of the Methodist movement. Their Jesus hates nothing. Jesus even said in Luke 19:27, as I told you a moment ago, He has enemies. But this is not the Jesus you guys are promoting. And the Jesus of the modern-day church in America, in America, has no enemies, does not care about whether or not you sin or not, has no problems with anyone. The Jesus of you people, for most of you, as He just says, "Let's all hold hands, sing kumbaya." For many of you, you don't even believe in hell. Of course, you only believe in heaven to suit your sin. And so you've done everything you can to get judgment, discernment, righteousness out of the picture. You see, the Bible says that sinners don't understand judgment. And I presume, the Bible says, you go into all the world, preach the gospel. Most of you are still sinners, and so you need to repent and believe the gospel. Wide is the gate, and broad is the way that leads to destruction. And most people go in that way. But straight is the gate, and narrow is the way that leads to life, and few people find What are you cheering for? Are you one of those effeminate volleyball-playing boys that's been out here all day? Bible says you need to be a man, junior, and grow up. And one way of being a man is living righteously, holy, godly, not playing and being obsessed with sports. One day, you're going to play your last little volleyball game, go to your last Methodist Church Conference, you're going to eat your last sandwich, eat your last meal, you're going to drink your last... You're gonna drink your last drink. You're gonna hang out with your family or your friends for the last time, and then the soul is separated from the body. And according to the Scriptures, the body goes back to the dust, and the soul goes back to the God who gave it to be judged. You know, the Bible even says, "Yolo, yolo." In Hebrews chapter 9, verse 27, "You only live once, and after this cometh the judgment." In Hebrews 9:27, it says, "It is appointed unto a man once to die." It's appointed unto a woman once to die too. These rebellious, feminist, Methodist women. It's appointed unto a man once to die, and after this cometh the judgment. For every beer you guzzle, every joint you smoke, every hoe and hoochie you sleep with, every single sin that you commit in your life, God's gonna bring it up. Jesus said, "God is so judgmental that he is gonna bring you into account for every idle word you speak." Every idle word, every cuss word, every gossip, every piece of sin, which is a reflection of your selfish heart and a reflection of your selfish motive of living, God's gonna bring it up to you. 'Cause I know how you sinners will do at the judgment seat. You'll say, "Oh, God, I never, I didn't sin. I know, I loved you. I did everything you said." But you know what? The bad thing is for you, the bad thing would be for me, is that your life is written in a book. In fact, in the Scriptures, it says that he is recording your life, and you are writing your own life story. You are pinning your own story onto the books of God. And when you stand in judgment, after your body goes back to the ground, uh, you're gonna give an account of your life, whether you like it or not, sinner. And the Bible says that when you stand before the Lord Jesus Christ, "Every knee shall bow, every tongue shall confess that Christ is Lord, to the glory of God the Father." This is obviously not the Jesus, these perverted Methodists. Who is this Jesus that kills people and sends them to hell? Who is this Jesus that damn souls forever? Who is this Jesus, whose eyes are as flames of fire, whose feet are as burning brass? Have you not read Revelations chapter 1? That talks about Christ, whose eyes are as flames of fire, whom John the Revelator fell at his feet as though he were dead? You people are so foolish. These effeminate Methodist men walking over here, so foolish, so ignorant, doesn't know their Bibles at all. Hebrews chapter 1, verse 9, Jesus Christ loved righteousness and hated iniquity, junior. You need to read your Bible again. I know how you people think, what you're doing, and who you are. God knows your heart, and it's open for all men to see. Your moral character is not hidden. God knows your heart, and your actions are like fruit on a tree. He sees the fruit of your life, and he judges you for your life. And he holds you accountable for the moral actions which you've committed. You see, God's law is love. And in God, there's no darkness at all. In 1 John 4:8, the Bible says, "God is love." But the same exact God is described as Isaac's flaming fire, whose feet are shining brass, who has enemies, and says, "Bring them hither and slay them before me." The same God who is love gave us a law of love. Jesus said in Matthew 22, verse 37 through 40, that God's law is this, to love him with all of your heart, all of your soul, all of your mind, all of your strength, and to love your neighbor as yourself. And on these two commands hangs all of the law and all of the prophets. God's law is love. But God's law condemns homo sex. God's law condemns porn-watching. God's law condemns your marijuana-smoking or your beer-guzzling. And the problem is with this, God's law is love that condemns these things.
Thank you very much.
Amen.
I'm at least from Russia.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Amen. Yeah. What is your name?
Israel Alexander.
And you're from where?
Uh, from, uh, Volgrad, Russia.
Volgrad, Russia?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Praise God, man. He says homosexuality is sin. So, you're here to, are you to vote? Are you gonna vote?
Yeah, I'm going. Pray for us.
Yes.
Pray for us, uh, together.
Yes.
We need your prayer.
Yes, we will pray.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
God bless you. What'd you say your name was again? Alexander?
Alexander, Alex.
Amen. Amen. Thank you. Amen. God bless you, brother. Amen. Praise God. Amen. You have a good day. Amen. See, some people in the Methodist church still have common sense. They read their Bible. One thing I have noticed about the Methodist church is that the American Methodists are homo supporters, and everybody else in the world is not. Don't you see a correlation there? Many of you say, "Oh, I think it's okay to smoke marijuana." Then I ask the question, "How many of you think it's okay to be gay?" All the same people raised their hand. There's a correlation there. You're not thinking straight. Your drugs, your alcohol, and your promiscuity has blinded your eyes. You watch so much porno, when you see all the homo sex on pornography, you start thinking, "It's normal to think this way. It's normal to be this way." You start watching your modern-day television shows, like The Modern Family. And one of the families on the television show is a homo couple. You start thinking, "It's normal. It's average. It's what everybody's doing. All the cool kids are doing it." In the middle schools and high schools, the coolest kids in class are the homos. They get everyone's best, they're the best friends of everybody. All the frat boys, oh, they love all the homos. Uh, homosexuality, they're the coolest kids in class now. Don't you see the problem here? Homosexuality's been normalized, just like feminism was normalized and becoming whores, just like alcohol was normalized after the prohibition, just like all these other immoral things. They're trying to normalize baby-killing in the womb, pedophilia, and homosexuality's already taken over. The next step for the Methodist church is becoming pedophiles, and the next step for it is bestiality. That's the next step for the modern American culture. And they're not there yet. Your conscience has not gone that low yet. But they're trying their best. In case you've not heard, one of the organizations that stands with the pedo, with, uh, homosexuality is NAMBLA, the National Association of Man-Boy Love. NAMBLA. How many of you have heard of that? And they march in the parades with the homos, and now you have the Methodist church accepting homosexuality, which holds hands with grown men that think little children should be sexualized. You should be ashamed of yourself. How embarrassing to be a Methodist in modern-day America. How embarrassing. I'm almost ashamed I preached in your churches. I'm almost... Keep it on me. Why are you here to vote on this Methodist church? Because you do not like to retain God in your knowledge. God gave you over to a reprobate mind. God loves everyone in hell. That doesn't mean that they don't still go to hell. God loves everyone in hellfire. But God's love, God's love is gonna kick the homo straight into hell. That's how God's love works. God's love preserves his kingdom. God's love preserves his law. And it's for the good of the public, God does uphold his law. How would you like it if God were a sodomite? How would you like it if God were a queer? How would you like it if God was unnatural? How would you like it if God was hateful, like sin is hateful? Oh, why are you here to vote on this? Why? The Bible says why. You don't like to retain God in your knowledge. Therefore, God has given you over to a reprobate mind to do those things which are not convenient. Therefore, the women and men leaving the natural use of the woman, burned in their lust one for another, men sleeping with men and women with women, doing those things which are not even to be spoken of. Romans chapter 1, verse 26 to 28. I can turn to you in two seconds. Bible verses that condemn homosexuality. You've not come here to find out what the Bible says about homosexuality. You've come here to decide what you think about homosexuality. And it doesn't really matter what you think or not. God's gonna hold you accountable. Shame on you for standing with sin. In case you've forgotten what the rainbow represents, it's a reminder that God will never judge the world again with a flood, but that the second time it would be with fire. How dare you take the rainbow as the symbol of pride? When the Bible says pride goes before a fall, and a haughty spirit before destruction.
The rainbow was actually a bow, like a bow and arrow. Check it even.
I understand that, sinner. The rainbow is also seven colors, not six. The homosexuals can't even get the rainbow right. That's how confused you are. You don't even know what the anus is for. You don't even know what your genitals are for. You think your genitals exist for your personal pleasure. That's why you're here to vote on what people do in the closet. I tell you what's happened. The homosexuals have come out of the closet. The Methodist churches went in the closet. And the Methodist church, they're truly born again. Within the Methodist movement, you need to rise up and to become men and women of God. And vote down these homos while you have the opportunity and time. While the vote is here, vote for God. I'm here today to encourage you to vote Jesus, not vote queer. Vote Jesus, not vote queer. Vote Jesus Christ. Vote for the Lord Jesus Christ today. Praise God, you can become homo-nomo through the power of the gospel. In 1 Corinthians chapter 6, verse 9, Paul said, "For you perverts..." You'll remember that one. 1 Corinthians 6:9, you'll remember that verse. "In 1 Corinthians chapter 6, verse 9, Paul said, 'Homosexuals are semites. Will not inherit the kingdom of God.'" And in 1 Corinthians 6:11, such were some of you. You see, whenever you're born again, you become homo-nomo. Look at this. Old people don't even know what their anus is for. How embarrassing. Old people don't even know what the rectum is for. You people are so confused. You just think that your bodies, you just wanna do whatever you want. You wanna do whatever you think you wanna do, forgetting Christ died to redeem you and save you from your sin. The Bible says in Matthew chapter 1, verse 21, "Christ came to save his people from their sin." You think, "Oh, I get to keep on sinning. Jesus died so I can keep on sinning." When Jesus said he died to save you from sin. He came to save you from sin. Sin is the problem. And mankind doesn't have to keep on sinning. You can be filled with love, filled with the Holy Spirit, and will the highest good of God in your neighbor according to their value. See, God has an infinite value. We oughta love him with infinite inability. We oughta love God with all of our heart that we have, all of our soul that we have, all of our mind, and all the strength that we have, and love our neighbor as ourself. But you're not loving one another when you're sodomizing one another. You're not loving one another when you're having sex with your boyfriend and girlfriend. You're not loving one another when you're getting drunk at the club, when you're smoking your marijuana, when you're killing your baby in the womb. You're not loving one another when you sin. Sin is injurious to God. Sin is injurious to your own physical body. That's why, for all of you who've been to gay pride parades, have you ever been to a gay pride? You have the prolapsed rectum boom. You have the HIV and AIDS boom. Of course, you've got the baby-killer Planned Parenthood boom. What I'm saying is, sin hurts people. Sin hurts God. Sin hurts yourself. Sin hurts other people. Sin hurts people. And that's why God says he doesn't want you to sin. Jesus Christ does not want you to sin, but to do his will. And you need to do God's will while you have opportunity. You need to fear God and keep his commandments. You need to love God with all of your heart, all of your soul, all of your mind, all of your strength. And when you love God that way, you won't sin that way against him, nor would you sin against your neighbor. Oh, yes, you can deny your homosexual temptation, just like a heterosexual can deny their temptation to watch porno. You can deny yourself your temptation. Bible says in 1 Corinthians chapter 10, verse 13, "No temptation is taking you, but such is as common to man. And God is faithful, who will not allow you to be tempted above that which you are able, but will make a way for you to escape the temptation, that you might be able to bear it." Shame on the Methodist church. Shame on you. Shame on you. Shame on you. I tell you the difference I've seen since I've been here. All the American Methodist people that are here, they all think homo, uh, homo sex is normal. But the African group, and the, and the Asian group, and the Indonesian group, thank God that it's not just the Americans voting on this. I can tell you exactly what would happen. Thank God for the foreigners here that know enough sins with them to know that this is still sin, and that it shouldn't be going on in the church. Thank God for the foreign people voting, or else you people in America would get your way. Oh, yes, America's backslidden from God. America's become wicked to the Lord, and the churches have become just the same. You need to change your mind while you have time and space. Repent!
Hey, sorry about that, brother.
Repent!
I could...
Repent of God! Repent of God! And he will heal you. The Bible says, "If you put down your sin, God will heal the land." But the Bible also says in the Old Testament, sodomites, homosexuals defile the land. They defile the land. And so, I love you enough to tell you that if you die a homo, and you're going straight to hellfire. I love you so much that I want to tell you that if you don't change your ways, there's no hope for you at all but certain fearful destruction and fiery indignation, which will consume the ashes. Oh, it's terrible. The homeless people are going straight to hell too without Jesus Christ. It doesn't matter if you're rich or poor. It doesn't make a difference. It's your moral character God holds you accountable for. You can be a wicked, poor man, or a wicked, rich person. You can be a righteous, poor man, or a righteous, rich person. Wealth does not determine morality. It's what you do with yourself, what you do in your life, what you do with your body.
Yeah, he found some batteries. Joe did, so, yeah, he brought them back. We had to change them out.
When you have women sleeping with women, and men sleeping with men, and you've gotta have a vote on whether or not that's normal, you people are sick. You people are unnatural.
God bless you, brother.
Just like Paul said. Paul said that homosexuality, he called it in Romans chapter 1, "A vile affection." Vile, filthy, disgusting.
You're vile, filthy, disgusting. Whoa.
Keep your mouth shut, sinner.
You keep your mouth shut.
And keep your mouth shut. Keep your mouth shut. And keep your mouth shut. Keep your mouth shut. You're not permitted to speak, sinner.
You're not permitted to speak.
The Bible says that the wages of sin is death, but the gift of God is everlasting life.
Freedom of speech.
Keep your mouth shut.
You keep your mouth shut, son.
Keep your mouth shut.
Who's calling you a bitch on the megaphone?
No!
Why'd you do that? He caught it off film.
No, I got everything off film.
God is going to take you to hell. You just called me a bitch. You just called me a bitch.
Stop lying. Stop lying, boy.
You're a liar. You're a liar, young man. You are a liar.
All you know is a bit of volleyball around. You know nothing about God. All you know is your volleyball. Grow up. Grow up. Grow up. Good watching your porno. Grow up, little bitch, junior. Grow up. Bible says that the wages of sin is death, but the gift of God is everlasting life. So you have these young sinners walking around here in their short shorts, thinking they're something in the sight of God. Epheminate, queer-looking men. The Bible's calling you out of darkness into his marvelous light. You need to repent, fear God, and turn back to him. While you have time, while you have opportunities, put down your porno, junior, and pick up a Bible. Many of you people, you don't even know what your anus is for. That's why you have homosexuals in your church. You don't even know what the rectum is for. You confuse the gastrointestinal system with the reproductive system. And now you're here as a church to vote on whether or not it's natural to confuse the reproductive with the gastrointestinal tract. At the end of the day, it is unnatural behavior. Even the physical body rejects this behavior. When you insert yourself into another man's rectum, you destroy his anus. The anus is not meant for penetration. You people are so unnatural, you don't even know what the anus is for. You're hurting one another with your sin, and God knows your heart. You're not here to vote on whether or not it's okay to love someone. You're here to vote on whether or not it's okay to have sex with someone of the same sex as you. That's what you're here to vote on, and it is a disgrace. It is a disgrace to God. And you people who think it's okay to be gay, that's hate speech. You have no right to speak for God, no right to speak up or say anything at all. You should not even have a vote if you think it's okay to be gay. You shouldn't even be allowed to vote for the president, or who's supposed to lead the country, if you think it's okay to be gay when you don't even know what your anus is for. You have become so confused, so confused. What I've noticed as well, a lot of the young people in the Methodist church are becoming pro-homo. And I highly doubt because they've read their Bible. Part of the problem is they've become women, or the women. Women are allowed to speak too much in the church. That's part of the problem. They've been given too much of a voice. And so you have all the women speaking now for the church. This is a problem. It's a systemic problem that the Methodist church has become pro-homo, that you have pastors who are... Most embarrassed I ever stood next to a Methodist building, much less have to come here and preach outside of your conference. How shameful it is that a professing Christian should have to have another professing Christian come and rebuke you. But the Bible says in the Old Testament, a good statement. It says, "The rebuke of the wise is as a tree of life," praise God. Uh, the rebuke of the wise is health to the bones. A wise man receives counsel, receives rebuke, and he's thankful for it when he receives it. God said, "Do not become exhausted at the chastening of the Lord, for whom the Lord chastens he loves, and scourges every son in whom he delights; but a bastard child receives no scourging, for they're not a child of the Father." You see, you as fathers have corrected your children because you love your children. You didn't hurt them or scold them for their own injury, but for their benefit. Likewise with God, when he sends a messenger to warn you as a sinner, he's sending the preacher to warn you that you might be healed, that you might have times of refreshing come from the presence of the Lord. So our desire is for your refreshing as a movement to be restored to revivalism, like Methodism was born out of, to get back to the method. But many of you have forgotten the method. And so we've come to beg you, and plead with you, and implore you in Christ's name, "Be ye reconciled unto God." What will it be? What will it be? What is your life? Your life is like a vapor which appears for a little while, and then it vanishes away. Life is short, death is sure. Sin the cause, and Christ the cure. And we have heard the joyful sound, praise God, Jesus saves, Jesus saves. And it's evident that there's a lot of Methodist people that need some saving, and need to repent of their sins and turn back to God. So we've taken time out of our busy schedule to come and rebuke you, that you might be healed, to beg you to change your ways. You see, we're not crazy people. We believe the Bible unlike your denomination, and we're begging you to reconsider the sin that you're condoning in that very building right over there, and that you would change your mind about these things. It's not good for you. It's not good for the church, not good for the denomination. And the only plan that should be voted on is the traditional plan.
Do you serve Jesus? Or you serve Satan? You gotta make the choice, old man.
"Choose you this day whom you will serve, as Joshua said, 'It's for me and my house.' We shall serve the Lord." Put down your stupid volleyball and pick up a Bible and turn to the living God. You've only got one life to live, and most of you know more sports names than you know Bible. You have more understanding of volleyball statistics than you know about the Bible. How embarrassing to stand before God, dying as a 40 or a 50-year-old man, and having more knowledge about volleyball than you know about Jesus Christ. How embarrassing. How shameful of you. And it's just the same thing. How shameful it is to know more about promiscuous sexual relationships than to know the Bible. Most of you have more understanding of your porno sites than you know about Jesus Christ. God knows your heart. Yes, shake your head, woman. Isn't it terrible? Shake your head. In shame, isn't it awful that you've got more pastors watching porn than you've got pastors thinking homosexuality is a sin? That's a shame. The American church is shameful and embarrassing to God. This is breaking God's heart, and you need to repent. The Bible says to repent. Jesus said in Luke 13:3, "Unless you repent, ye shall perish." Every single one of you, gay, homo, straight, sodomite, heterosexual, homosexual, whatever you claim or call yourself to be, LGBTQVWXYZ, whatever part of the alphabet you think you are. Uh, the Bible says it's appointed unto man once to die, and after this comes the judgment, and that your foot shall slip in due time. Think of all the people that go to hell tonight that did not plan on it this morning. All the people that died today that didn't intend to die, and all those who did intend or expect to die.
Not an organization.
I know a lot of you are Catholic. That's also a problem. You like going to your Catholic church, you can guzzle your wine. Oh, let me, oh yeah, I go tell the father over at the church, "Oh, father, I sin this week," and then the pervert says, "Oh, tell me all your sins you've committed." "Oh, yes, tell me in the little booth what all you've done," and all these sorts of things. Oh yes, you need to fear God and turn back to him, and stop, stop sinning! Stop the life of sin. Stop guzzling your beer. Stop smoking your marijuana. Stop being a homosexual. Stop sinning! That's what metanoia means. Repent, change your mind. Go a new direction. Go a different way. Flee from the wrath of garbagees to come. I'm quoting to you Bible, 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 Bible. Why do you not listen? Because you love your sin. I had some Methodist preachers come up to me yesterday, saying, "Oh, I'm doctor so-and-so. Oh, I'm pastor so-and-so. I've got so many degrees. Son, you just don't know what you're talking about because I'm pastor so-and-so." In the Methodist church, congratulations, you have a piece of paper that says you can go behind a building's pulpit and speak some frilly words. The Bible says, Wesley said, "The whole world is his pulpit," glory to God. Here's the pulpit of the preacher, this street corner. And we've come to call you two repentants, knock that sick man over there with that pervert scarf on. You need to repent and get right with God before your legs get even weaker and you fall straight into hell. You need to consider your life. You get one life to live, twill soon be passed, only what's done for Christ will last. Oh, you need to think about your life and your ways. You need to consider your life. What is your life? Your life is like a vapor. It appears for a little while. You spring up like a flower of the field. Then the sun rises, it gets hot, and the flower fades. The vapor fades away, so is the life of man. And think of the short lifespan you're going to play in the history of the Methodist church. And this is the legacy you're going to leave? Oh, unity in diversity? Unity in diversity? The only people that aren't allowed to be diverse are those who say homosexuality is sin. The sodomites don't like that kind of diversity. They want the diversity to be perverts in the middle of the church. If the sodomites had it their way, every church would be a gay orgy. If the sodomites had it their way, they would be having their gay orgies right behind the pulpit. You see, these perverted people, they try to justify their desires by saying, "Oh, I'm in a monogamous, committed relationship. Oh, I'm committed to my spouse. Uh, we're homosexuals that are committed to one another." Doesn't matter if you're committed or not. Still the same threat of HIV and AIDS, still the same threat of prolapsed rectum, still the same threat of gay bowel disease. It doesn't matter what you say you do or are. The same risk of ripping open your esophagus. These things are disgusting to even mention openly like this. You say you're committed to one another, all you're committed to is abusing another man's anus for your sexual pleasure. That is embarrassing to even say out loud. You're committed to your sexual acts with one another, and you say, "Oh, I'm in a committed relationship." I would say that that's probably a lie. Homosexuals say they're committed? Ha! You're not committed to one another. You can't even be committed to God. And a person can't even love their spouse if they don't know how to surrender to the Lord Jesus Christ. And if you reject God's law, you're obviously not surrendered to him. How hardly can you surrender to one another in a committed relationship? You are not committed to one another in love, you're committed to one another in lust. That's a big difference. Many of you confuse the passions of your genitals for love. You think, "Oh, me and my partner, we love one another." How do you know you love one another? Jesus said you love each other by fulfilling the law. "He that loves one another fulfills the law," Romans 13, verse 8. "Oh, no man anything but to love one another, for he that loveth another fulfills the law." You know how you hate one another? You reject the law of God and do what you want to do in your life. That's exactly what you pervert homos are doing. And we beg you, from ex-sinners, we were sinners ourselves, and Christ has changed us. Paul said in 1 Corinthians, chapter 6, verse 11, "Such were some of you." My first cousin was a homosexual, and now she's saved, and she's married to a man, glory to God, lived with a woman for eight years. So praise God. You can become homo-nomo through the glory of the precious gospel of Jesus Christ, as I've heard said before. You can become, when you turn to Jesus Christ, the liar becomes honest, the homosexual becomes normal, the adulterer becomes faithful, the drunker becomes sober. Whenever you get saved, you have a change of moral character. You don't say a sinner anymore, you become a saint. The Bible was written to the saints at Ephesus, to the saints at Corinth, to the saints at Rome. When you get saved, you become a saint, not a homosexual Christian. You need to be changed. You say, "Oh, God doesn't care about what I do in the closet." Evidently he does, because he spoke about it in 1 Corinthians, chapter 6, verse 9 through 11, Galatians, chapter 5, verse 19 to 20, 1 Timothy, chapter 1, verse 8 through 11. He talks about sins you people do in your closet with one another. Because he mentions your sexually perverted sin, and he says it separates you from him. And it's ultimately not necessarily that, but the condition of your heart. Your selfish heart is what's causing you to do these wicked deeds. And you need to repent of the selfish motive and intention of your heart. And if you would do that by denying yourself this pleasure you love severely, then you could be healed, and you would become homo-nomo by the power of the gospel. Homo in the Methodist church. Oh, how terrible. How unnatural. How unreasonable! You see, there's so much evidence for God. Being an atheist would be stupid. There's so much evidence for God. Being an atheist would be the dumbest thing you could ever choose to do with your life. Look at all the intelligent information in the genetic code. Look at all the intelligent information in the nature of things. The universe is understandable, reasonable, and calculable. This is unexplainable with unguided processes. Darwin was one of the stupidest of men that has ever existed. His theory was never proven. Uh, no transitional species. Uh, all these factors to say that being an atheist, or being a homo, or all these selfish behaviors of life are only an action to reject righteousness. It's not good for you, and you need to repent. You need to turn to God and live. You need to lay down your beer and pick up a Bible. You need to put down your porn and start praying. You need to fear God and do his will. Jesus said in Matthew, chapter 10, verse 27, "Do not fear the wine which destroys the body, but afterwards can do no more. But yet rather I tell you, fear him that has power to destroy soul and body in hell."
Being molested doesn't give you an excuse to be a homo. You need to be born again.
You need people are sick in the sight of God. You make me want to vomit. Think of what God thinks. You make me sick. Think about how God feels. God is so much more righteous than me. God is so much more high than me. He is so much higher than I am or we are, and he said he would vomit you out of his mouth as being a lukewarm person. How much more, if I'm sick of it, must he feel? Oh yes, people need to fear God. And I implore you, beg you, and plead with you to repent and to turn back to your first love, and do the first works over again. That's what Jesus counseled. The church of final church of history, the lair to see a church, he counseled them to buy of me gold tried in the fire, uh, seven times burned in a furnace. He counseled them to buy robes of him and gold of him that last them to eternal life. He counseled them. But you know what the church said? They said, "We're rich. We're increased with goods. We have need of nothing." And he said they did not even know that they were poor, wretched, blind, miserable, naked.
Amen!
Oh, you people are poor, blind, wretched, miserable, naked. The Methodist church has got a lot of money. What they don't have is much sense. Because you're here to vote on whether or not two men can have sex together. Think of how unnatural and weird that is, that a church has to even talk about this in the pulpit. Paul rebuked the Corinthians for fornication, much less homosexuality. Paul rebuked the Corinthians for fornication, which is, uh, sexual promiscuity. And we're here to rebuke you for your fornication, your adultery, and your promiscuous homosexuality. And you need to repent. While you have time and space, repent.
Remember, vote Jesus. We need pins that say, "No homo." We need pins that say, "No homo." Vote for Jesus. That means the Bible. In case you've forgotten, read your Bible. Jesus was not a homo supporter. He supported the love of God, which is anti-homo. God's love is a consuming fire. It consumes the sin. God wants a holy church, not a homo church. Vote for Jesus. Amen! Yes, there we go. Back again. Vote Jesus. Vote for the holiness.
Yes!
Amen!
Whoops, sorry. One guy thought he was going to punch me.
It's a shame for men to have long hair. Do you read the Bible? You Methodist? He cut your hair.
God would not condemn something he creates.
Vote Jesus. Vote for the schism, traditional, which means actually Bible. You liberal idiots are ruining the church. It's called Bible? Bible? All you have is a degree, homo. All you have is a degree.
Flaming homo.
You need to repent, buddy. God would be happy, more happy than you're repentant than I am. Because you're way more lost than I was. But not be a great day in heaven. Angels will be rejoicing with you.
There's dangers to be a pervert, cheers.
Angels.
But you're happening to the captive church.
And Jesus still angry with you.
So what you're seeing right now, we're preaching, Joe's preaching, and right in front of the conference center is a male homosexual wearing high heels, telling people, "God loves you. God bless you. Have a good day." Uh, and many of the Methodists, many of the Methodists, they're hugging him and giving him high fives, while they walk into their conferences after lunch just now. And they're high-fiving one another, and encouraging one another, and strengthening the hands of one another. And so this event has been just like a gay pride parade. Someone yesterday on Facebook, and it surely has been, the second day is the day. It's very cold. And, uh, Methodist church is still not repented, so pray for its repentance. Amen. I'm a little undercover right now. They claim that this sidewalk here is private, and that the homos own this sidewalk somehow or another, since they're having a conference here. No one else but the conference attendees can stand on the sidewalk, which is a total lie, because other people in the community are walking on the sidewalk, but they said, "We can't be here." Which is discriminatory, and we could probably press that in court, but we're not going to waste our time. But, uh, it just goes to show how they try to suppress preaching of the gospel. So, uh, just pray for this movement, that God would move on it. Amen. Amen. Go ahead, sure. Is it long?
Okay.
Yeah, we're good. Thank you. Amen.
Amen. Perfect.
Amen.
Great! Hallelujah!
Hey, brother, he's going to preach.
Bible says that the wages of sin is death, but the gift of God is everlasting life in Romans, chapter 6, verse 23. The gift of God...
You sure that's very loud, brother? I can't... You may have to go over there and tell and see. I don't know if it's loud.
Okay, you probably have to speak up.
The gift of God is everlasting life. Christ died to make forgiveness available, but if you don't repent and believe the gospel, it doesn't actually, uh, help you at all. Christ's death was such that it saved nobody in and of itself. Without Christ dying, your repentance would be ineffectual, your faith would be ineffectual, and your perseverance would be ineffectual. The Methodist church's position on the atonement is Christ dead was a propitiation for all men. was a propitiation for all men. Meaning he died for all men so that all men might be saved. However, that's not without conditions. A propitiation has to be accepted and received still. And the reception of the atonement of Christ is on the condition that you repent and that you believe the gospel and that you persevere to the end. For the scripture says, "Blessed is he that endures to the end; the same shall be saved." If you're not enduring in obedience to God, you're not walking in actual faith. The Bible says, "The faith that saves is the faith that obeys." Read James, Chapter 2. James, Chapter 2, talks about a dead faith. And James, Chapter 2, talks about a living faith. Do you have a living faith or do you have a dead faith? Many of you have a dead faith, and the evidence is a life of sin. Sin brings death. And you have an obviously dead faith when the faith you profess to have doesn't change your moral character. And if you're still pursuing promiscuous sexual relationships with one another, you are promoting and plainly showing you have not been converted under the sound of the gospel. Jesus Christ preached and came to set the captive free. And if you're still a homo tonight, you're a slave to your genitals. You're a slave to your genitals. You worship your genitals more than you're willing to worship God. If you cannot deny your genitals, you definitely can't deny yourself. If you're living for what is between your legs, you have how hardly have you entered into the life of the Spirit? If you can't so much as deny your genitals, you definitely don't know God. And if you have perverted sexual desires like a homo has and you can't deny those desires for the sake of holiness, you don't know God. Just like a man gets married to a woman and he's to be faithful to that one woman, so a homo is to deny his lusts in order to be faithful to God. A man is to be faithful to his spouse just like a homosexual ought to deny themselves of their temptations. This is not a biased thing. If homosexuals or heterosexuals need to deny themselves their temptations, homosexuals need to deny themselves of their temptations. And the Bible says in 1 Corinthians, Chapter 10, verse 13, "No temptation is taking you but such as is common to man. And God is faithful, who will not allow you to be tempted above what you are able, and will with the temptation also make a way of escape that you might be able to bear it." So if you're struggling with same-sex attraction, good news. Christ gives you a way of escape that you might be able to bear up under it and deny yourself. Just like a heterosexual shouldn't watch porno and masturbate, a homosexual ought to deny themselves of their promiscuous sexual desires. Whether or not it's monogamous or committed or all this other language you use to justify it, it's still what you do with your penis that God is going to require your hands. No pun intended. And God is requiring you to live holy, righteously, and godly in this present age. What you do with your genitals is as much a moral choice as what you do with your hands to steal or to work for your own money. If you use your hands to steal, that's immoral. If you use your penis to do sexually promiscuous things, that is immoral. What you do with your body and what you do with your hands and your mind are moral choices. You need to think about the lifestyle that you've come here to vote for as a denomination and consider how foolish it is that you should even need to reconsider what the Bible has already said, what is already written in the scriptures by men inspired by the Holy Spirit. It doesn't take a genius to know that the male hookup and the female hookup are the way it hooks up in electronics or in being electrician or working as an engineer. We all know that female to female or male to male is not the way it works. I think that's common sense. Female to male, male to female. That's basic anatomy. Basic fifth grade anatomy. So it's not really too hard to understand that if you have a man walking around in high heels wanting to have sex with another man like we seen earlier out here, it is doubtless whether or not that man has any inheritance in the kingdom of righteousness and of God. Paul said in Ephesians, Chapter 5, verse 5 and 6, "That sexually immoral people will not inherit the kingdom of God. Little children, let no man deceive you with vain words; for because of these things comes the wrath of God on the children of disobedience." The problem is you have people in the church that think they're something because they got their degree from Asbury and that they're so high and mighty that they can disagree with basic natural revelation that we see in nature and revealed in the word of God. I had a homosexual tell me before that you see male dolphins help one another, so why can't men? And you admit that the behavior is animalistic when you equate homosexual behavior with the animal kingdom. Don't you see the confusion you have when you act like an animal as a moral human being made in the image of God? There's a big difference between you and a male dolphin. I think you can lift your thinking up just a little bit out of the gutter to realize how unnatural it is to do such vile things. Hopefully, the one church plan will be shot down. The homos will be kicked out of the building and out of the church, and they will be next communitated with God. Hopefully, that will reach Jesus. The Bible says that Trump is the president of the church. A man is not the same. You know that. You're going to go to him personally. If he rejects you, you're going to go with him with two or three witnesses. If they reject two or three witnesses, you're going to go to the church. Well, I know you homos have been reviewed by at least somebody. Hey, brother. Put those down. Now we bring you before the church and hope to God they reject you, homos and sodomites, and reject you out of the church. And the reason we do that is that you might understand the mildness of your behavior and that you would repent. If you will not repent, you are to be counted according to Paul as an infidel and an unbeliever. And I am venturing to say, I have met quite a few unbelievers out here today and yesterday. And I presume we will the rest of the week because you don't want to retain God in your knowledge for the sake of your genital lusts. The Bible says in Romans, Chapter 1, "That even as they did not like to retain God in their knowledge, God gave them over to a reprobate mind to do those things which are not convenient. Therefore the women and the men they left the natural use of the woman; and the men burned in their lusts one toward another, and with men likewise also the women, burning in their lusts for one to another, receiving in themselves the recompense of their error, which was made." It is an embarrassment that you even have to have a conference to discuss whether or not this is acceptable behavior. It is completely, entirely, 100% unnatural and despicable. Shame on you. The Bible says the white hair is wisdom. I'm beginning to change my mind because the white-haired Methodist people I'm meeting are sodomites and others. I don't make white hair. This is a topic of wisdom as I thought it was before I got here yesterday. How shameful you people are to make the name of Christ of such no reputation, of such a disgusted nature, that you make and equate Christ with male-on-male and female-on-female sexual acts.
Try pointing it more that way. Or that corner might bounce, recoil more.
You people ought to know better. Shame on you. Shame on you. Whoa, you want to the Methodist church, go into you. You realize Jesus Christ said, "Whoa." I've been described to the Pharisees. Come on. Then Jesus said, "He describes the Pharisees for living too holy. He rebuked them for being hypocrites." You want to know who the real strides in the Pharisees are? Go in that building. It'll not take you long to meet a couple because they covet this godliness but deny the power they're on from such people. Turn away. Turn away. This conference is so vile. That's what I mean. I already studied all the religion shit. I got a degree in it.
We are from where? Asbury, like you guys?
Oh, no, no, I got a Jewish school.
Well, Asbury. Man, I want you to go to heaven, I guarantee.
I know, I don't believe.
There's not, I know you don't, but just me personally, the few into you, I really love. I believe that.
You don't know.
I know, I still love you because of my debate.
Then you're bastardizing the word. Like you only love somebody that you respect and that you know. You don't know me, so you can't possibly respect me.
Well, listen to you, whether you have a definition.
I'm not saying that you just respect me. I'm not saying that, like, you don't know me enough to respect me so that word can't be used. Amen. God bless you all. The preaching of the gospel has went forward today outside the Methodist conference. And unbeknownst to us, we were thinking, brothers, what are we going to do tonight? Sunday night? Guess what's going on Sunday night? A tranny show. A tranny show is going on right down the road from where we're at. Look at this.
Oh, no.
Sinners out here tonight. Terrible. So here's a tranny show. Brother Joe is preaching. I think she's mock, brother, I think she's mocking you. I think. Brother, Joe, Joe, she's just a mocker. She's mocking you. So this is a tranny bar right here. Look at this, look at this guy. No shame at all. No shame at all. Hamburger Mary's Bar and Grill. So we're buking a tranny bar here tonight and Sunday night. And the thing is, the Sunday night transsexual bar is full. The church is empty, but the tranny bar is full right here in St. Louis, Missouri. And tonight, they're having a special show called The Divas.
Why do you do this to yourself? Why? I don't want you to go to hell. I don't.
So pray for us. Amen. God bless you.
You need to stop it. You need to obey Jesus. Stop it. Turn to Jesus. You're on your way to hell. Oh, the Bible says, "To love God without your heart, without your soul, without your mind, than to love thy neighbor as thy selves." You're not loving your neighbor. You are hating your neighbor. How is this entertaining to you perverts? Shame on you. Shame on you wicked perverts. Shame on you. You need to turn to Jesus. You need to obey Jesus. That marijuana smoking will send you to hell. Marijuana smoking, Jesus does not approve of it.
Oh, no.
Jesus is better than marijuana. Those are the holy shit. Then pass it. I used to say, "Son of a..."
You wicked sodomite, you don't know the scriptures.
You are blinded. Shame on you.
You don't even know me. Blind, you are blinded.
I see your fruit, you child of the devil. Those demons better pass. I repuke them in Jesus' name. Jesus repukes.
You're going to burn in hell for eternity. So, so what's happening right now is that we have come to find that a lot of the Methodist church conference came to the tranny bar to watch the transsexual show after their conference. I've seen at least six to 10 Methodist church people from the conference coming out of the bar, watching the transsexual show. So after the conference, I guess the Methodist people thought, "Let's go get us a beer and watch a man who's dressed as a woman strip." So that's currently what's going on right now. What you just seen was one or two of the Methodist church people telling us that we're wrong for preaching against their sin, quoting Romans 3:23, the transsexuals were out of the Methodist church. So we're here to rebuke them and call them to repentance. My battery is low, which is why I keep turning you guys on and off. So bear with me. But preaching outside of Eat, Drink, and Be Merry, there are play on words from the book of Ecclesiastes. This is Mary's Hamburgers in St. Louis, Missouri. And they have transsexual shows. Shame on you. Shame on you. Shame on you. Methodist church, you are being found out. Your sins have found you out. You wicked sodomite lovers. It's true, the problem. You're the problem of the church.
You spit on the blood of Jesus.
Yep. There was more people from the Methodist church coming out of the transsexual bar. Where currently, right now, currently, right now, one of their strippers is stripping inside the bar. And they have glass on their storefront. You can look in the store from the street and see them stripping. So very sick, very, very sick and disgusting. Is that where you were at, the Methodist conference? Now you're going to enjoy your sin of sodomy watching perverted people, you wicked sodomites. Wicked. Wow. We have caught them red-handed.
That's a lie. No homosexual is gay. They're a bunch of bitchy feminists. They're going to go to hell the way they are. But Jesus wants to clean them up.
I sure hope you weren't in the Methodist conference. Here's wicked homos from the Methodist church. Your sodomic spirits coming out.
You have nothing to gain and everything to lose because Bible says.
Look, I want to get a video. This is Luis from Mark. Where's that from? Where are you from, Luis? Right from the Methodist church conference. Trying to change the church of God. You guys should be ashamed of yourselves.
Wait, you said, wait, no, bro. I literally walked into though.
No, I don't want you to.
What's new with you?
I love you. I love you. I don't want you to go to hell. That's what I'm telling you. No, 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 no. I'm just warning you. The Bible says, "For whom we preach, warning every man, and teaching him now, and all wisdom."
Amen.
And we may present every man perfect in Christ. I know I quoted that verse.
I cannot believe that. We've now seen at least 15 to 20 Methodist people at this club. On video, I got it. You like a gospel track? We're just passing out tracks. Thank you, sir. Would you like a gospel track? Talks about the Bible, salvation, that sort of thing. Do you want a gospel track?
Gospel track, sure.
Sure.
Thank you.
No problem. Good day. Yeah. It's a good one. No problem. Would you like a gospel track? Talks about Jesus, the Bible, that sort of thing.
I'll pass on that.
Sure.
Thanks anyway.
No problem. Would you guys like a gospel track? Talks about Jesus, the Bible. It's all free. No problem. You have a good night. Have a good flight. Would you guys like a gospel track? Just talks about Jesus, the Bible, that sort of thing. It's free.
Yeah, sure.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
No problem. You have a good day. Hey, Joe. Joe.
Oh, I think I have one. How you doing, John? Yes, so, uh...
Oh, wait, wait.
I was just wondering maybe if you guys can stop handing out stuff.
Oh, sure.
I do appreciate it, okay?
Sure.
Thank you so much. It's making everybody uncomfortable. Oh, okay. What about you? Can you take one? I'm good, man. I'm good. Thank you so much. Like I said, it's me I'm fine with it, but everybody's getting uncomfortable. So just respectfully asking if you guys could stop it.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. High five?
Yep. They probably would've followed us to the room if... We would've went earlier. So it's kinda good that you stayed behind a bit.
Amen.
This is just getting a knock on the door.
So in two minutes and 30 seconds, we just covered an entire bar with gospel tracks. Glory to God. Amen.
Amen. Praise God. How many do you have left?
I got a ton.
I got it.
Jesus for the win.
Amen. Praise God.
That was the final outreach of this mission.
Yep.
Praise the Lord. Amen, everybody. This is Zach Humphrey with Public Proclaimer Ministries. And we are traveling home from St. Louis, Missouri. Been traveling all day with Brother Joe. Dropped him off in Louisville earlier. And I just wanted to do a final recap on this week's trip to St. Louis. We traveled in on Saturday and preached all day Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. Today is Tuesday and we're on our way home. We preached at the Methodist Church Conference Saturday, Sunday, and Monday night. And Monday during the day, we open air preached at University of Missouri, Mizzou, in Columbia, Missouri with Brother Jeff Mullen. And we also had a brother from, that wasn't even with us in plans, travel up from Texas by train and he preached with us all week long. To Sunday, we also got to meet with the Mississippi Boys down south who are traveling through the area preaching open air. And so we had a really good weekend of preaching. Got to meet some local brethren, Jim Butler and others, Brother Aaron Brummett. And so we had a really great preach this week. And so thank you for your prayers. Thank you for your support financially. Anything you do for Public Proclaimer Ministries is thank... I'm thankful for it and I know that God will bless you for what you're doing in helping to spread His word. So we've had a great preach. We had one man pray for salvation. Glory to God. We've passed out literally hundreds of gospel tracks every day. The entire leadership of the Methodist church heard our preaching for three days straight. So that's probably been good for them and I don't know if the Mississippi Boys got them today or not as they were finalizing the conference. So me and Joe had a great time of fellowship together, Brother Jeff Mullen. We had a great time of fellowship together. And so I hope you've enjoyed the video. It's just small snippets of things that happened throughout the preach. We did encounter Westboro Baptist Church and got to rebuke them, though I didn't get that on video. And we had several wild encounters that I didn't get on video either. But the point of it all is God's got it on video. It's written in His books. And I just like to keep you guys through video format, seeing what is going on in the world around you. I had one guy message me and say, "Zach, I didn't know the world was this wicked till I watched your videos." Or like, it's the way it is today. And so hopefully by watching these videos, you're emboldened to preach the gospel, open air, pass out gospel tracks, be a witness and a light for Christ, be faithful and be bold for the Lord. He's done so much for us. What could you possibly do that would be too much for Him? So please continue to pray for Public Proclaimer Ministries. Consider becoming a prayer partner. Also, just as an exhortation, we also accept financial donations for gospel tracks, banners, travel expenses, whatever it is that the Lord lays on your heart to join in the ministry with us. With, we welcome you and we thank you for your prayers. And so we thank you and I'm gonna head home now. I hope you've enjoyed the video. God bless you.